Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, August 24th Montgomery County Commission Meeting. I stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk? Commissioner of Rights? Here. Commissioner of Doc? Here. First up, we have County Administrator.
Dr. Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, we have several items to debate. The first is Resolution 21-1074 to amend the agreement with Altcore Enterprise for the Philadelphic Drive and Marquee Road Culvert Replacement Project in Harrison Township by adding $20,526.56 to the original amount for revised total of $456,687. 1075 is to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program or the Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts for the Peppermint Road Bridge project. Then we have several agreements to approve. 1076 is for WG Stain LLC for the Peters Pike and Laura Michaelburg Road Culvert Replacement Project in Bubler and Lightning Township that their lowest investment bid of $272.72.60. And 1077 is for form of site development for the Alex Bell Road and Ferragon Road Intersection Improvement Project in Washington Township that their lowest investment bid of $273,727.80.
I'm going for approval. Second, all those in favor. Aye. County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Administrator Report, we have Resolution 1078 authorize purchase from Justice AV Solutions Inc. of audiovisual equipment for the Municipal Court in an amount not to exceed $233,353.83.
I'm going for approval. Aye, second. All those in favor. Aye. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator and the Park's Office, we have approved the minutes of meetings on August 17, 2021. Resolution 1079, approval bills. And Resolution 1080, approval travel expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Park's Office.
I'm going for approval. Second, all those in favor. Aye. Administrative Services. You know?
Thank you.
This is formal here. You haven't.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. We have five items and one late item today. 1081 is the approval of personnel actions, and the list is available in the Clerk's Office. 1082 amends the agreement with Business Plans Inc. to provide administration of the Montgomery County Flexible Study Account and Kova Administration Services for the Human Resources Department in an amount not to exceed $122,500, and that's through December 31, 2022. 1083 authorizes a price agreement with BI Inc., Inc. for electronic home monitoring services for various county departments, and that's through January 31, 2022. 1084 authorizes a sole source purchase from equipment for software migration services for the Clerk of Courts in an amount not to exceed $79,315.14. And 1085 authorizes a sole source agreement with Thomson Reuters to provide books subscription services for the Law Library in an amount not to exceed $78,725.88. And that agreement will take you through August 27, 2026. We have one late item, and that's 1098 authorizes a facility rental agreement with Sinclair Community College with the Montgomery County Fatherhood Summit in an amount not to exceed $5,750.36.
I'm going for approval. Aye, second. All those in favor. Aye. Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1086, release 100% of the cash security and subdividers contract with CCTV Washington Township LLC for the Panera Bread Shell. 1087 accept the official check for the Trails of Saddle Creek Development Section 12 in the amount of $50,267.84. The following five are to prepare and submit applications to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and execute contracts as required for grants and loans. 1088, Bayside and Bear Water Main Replacement Project Phase 2 in the amount of $1,500,000. 1089 for Regent Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $985,000. 1090 for Delwood Estates Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $500,000. 1092 for Delwood Ridge Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $500,000. And 1092 for Lucas Camp Area Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $985,000.
I'm going for approval. Follow the paper. Aye. We'll see you in a little bit.
Got it.
Michelle, Department of Job and Family Services.
Good afternoon. We have three items for Job and Family Services today. 1093, entering into a substitute care agreement with Teaching, Education, and Achieving LLC for services rendered through March 31, 2022. We have 1094 entering into a memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County Family and Children First Council for multi-system use, and this provides 5% for administrative costs related to those services. And then we have a late item, 1099, which is permission to advertise and solicit RSVs for non-emergency transportation services, which will begin on October 1, 2021, with two possible one-year renewals running in 2023 and 2024.
I'm going for approval. Aye, second. All those in favor. Aye. Chris, Business Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have two resolutions for you under Workforce Development. 1095, amended Cisco Webex pricing schedule under the AT&amp;T Corporation Master Agreement for deployment of post-add voice-over Internet services and employment opportunities at Westtown. The next one should be listed under Community and Economic Development. It's 1096, authorizing co-share membership agreement with Arcade Innovation Hub to assist with my apologies. Development opportunities for international domestic projects, and this is a worth of entrepreneurs, in the amount of $4,800 through August 15, 2022.
I'm going for approval. Second, all those in favor. Aye. Next up, we have a hearing. This is 21-1097, solid waste amended rates and fee schedules.
President, are there any members who wish to speak related to the actual hearing itself? Always hearing. Yeah, anybody who wishes to make a statement regarding the hearing itself. I'd ask you to stand. James, you might have to say something too, so just wait. Raise your right hand. Do you swear upon the testimony you will give the truth, the whole truth, and the life of the truth, as you have? Yes, too. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Montgomery County Solid Waste District is proposing several rate and fee increases that would go into effect January 1, 2022. These changes will largely impact out-of-county customers. The main goal of these increases is, one, to be equitable to Montgomery County residents, two, to cover the cost of providing specific services, and, three, to reduce customer wait times and congestion at the transfer facility. Earlier this year, our team vetted these rate increases through a coalition made up of the local jurisdictions in the county. This included the district's financial advisory committee and the solid waste advisory committee. Can both committees weigh in favor of these changes? All right. We are proposing to increase the tipping fee for out-of-county customers home. It's important to note that the last time we raised out-of-county tipping fees was in 2003, about 18 years ago. If you're a county resident, you will not see any increase to dispose of your waste at the transfer facility. Out-of-county rate will go from $37 a tonne to $55 a tonne. One of the reasons for this increase is it would provide equity to our Montgomery County residents. Every Montgomery County residential property owner currently pays $21.50 annually to the solid waste district through an assessment fee on their real estate tax bill. Therefore, county residents' costs are lower at the facility. All customers will be impacted by the minimum charge, which will change from $2 to $5 per visit. This is cut down on the number of transactions and traffic at the facility, which will reduce wait times on the public side. This matches Miami County, Franklin County also. They have a $5 minimum charge. We don't want our customers to pay more, we just want them to come less. We are proposing an increase to our tire fees. This is to cover our cost for recycled material for both county residents and out-of-county customers. Although the rate for in-county customers is proposed to increase from $170 to $240 per tonne, Montgomery County residents can still recycle 10 tires free each year. Out-of-county customers will see the rates increase from $212.50 to $337 per tonne. I have an important announcement. We are bringing back the tire buyback event. This was canceled last year in the pandemic. That's coming up Sunday, September 19. For appliances, there are no changes for county residents. However, we are proposing to increase that fee for out-of-county from $37 to $55 per tonne to cover our costs and to match our out-of-county tipping fees. Important notes, we do offer appliance amnesty program offered to Montgomery County residents twice a year where they can drop them off for free. And for the appliances with free-on for county residents, free-on removal will remain free. And for out-of-county, it will increase from $11 to $25 each to cover our labor and equipment Currently, the following services are free, however, to cover our costs, we are proposing adding these miscellaneous fees. The first is the data assist terminals. These are a puck. This fee would be $60 per device. These are the devices that are installed on the commercial vehicles that utilize the commercial scales. Second is the commercial contractor, the construction and demo debris from the $30.50 to $60 a tonne. This is because that debris is not compatible for our process and unnecessary wear and tear to our trailers and equipment, and there are various other construction and demo sites where that can go in Montgomery County. This third is credit card fees to 2.3%. These are convenience fees to cover the cost we pay to our payment processing partner when a customer pays by credit card. The last is the dig-out charge fee. That was free, now we're at $200 per request. This is when we receive a roll-off container that is frozen or stuck, and per request, we will utilize our heavy equipment to dig that waste out of the container for the $200. Finally, the last slide here is we're looking to change our hours on the weekdays by closing one hour earlier. Instead of closing at 8:00 p.m., we would like to close at 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. There will be no changes to the Saturday hours. We did look at the data, and we had about 1.5% of our transactions occur between 7:00 and 8:00. This would give us more overlap with our two shifts of employees at the busiest time of the day. That wraps up my presentation. I'd like to open up for any questions. Yes?
I'm back in Dayton after not living here 50 years, and I live part-time in Athens in Boulder, Colorado. Clearly, Dayton has a huge issue with garbage and yard waste and construction on the streets and in yards all over Dayton. So is there a way you can make your services? I know people who work for free trying to clean these places, some of the places up. Can the county do more about contacting absentee landlords as well as making it free for people to dump there if they can prove they've picked this stuff up in someone else's property, on someone else's property?
Thanks for the question. I do know that we work with our local jurisdictions and municipalities, and we try to support them any way we can. I don't, we can't offer anything free, but we do have yard waste that is a cost that is free service if they bring it. But I would probably. Sorry.
That's not a problem.
No problem. I would suggest maybe contact City of Dayton.
I put it up on all your websites, the photos, this one woman who's working her hind end off, trying to get the city and the county to respond to these dump sites. Oh, you guys know, you guys know. So why not give some incentive for people to bring it there to your facility for free?
Good idea about you on the way in.
Sure. What AMTV? Yeah, we have Environmental Crimes Task Force available to us through the Sheriff's Office. We actually have a couple of sheriffs on our payroll, and they actually go to some of these sites in conjunction with the City of Dayton, and we try to find the owners. If they're orphan sites, but usually if it's material, there's always a magazine in there or an envelope or something to go back and to try to find the owner of that waste. May not be the same person that disposed of it, but it's the owner. They go back and they talk to the owner. The owner will say, somebody came to my house and they cleaned out my garage and picked up all this material. I don't know where it went, but they will provide that information to us. So we have a Keep Montgomery County Beautiful program also, and we have a litter hotline. So if you were to call that litter hotline, we will respond to those type of complaints.
But Lynn Lemans, who's done amazing amounts of work on this issue on the northwest side of Dayton, you know, I took what she had put up at her Facebook page and put it to the city's website, the county's website, and different people, the task force. Come on, it's a huge problem here. You guys have to be more innovative, sorry.
No, don't be sorry. We also have available to the City of Dayton and ourselves, remote cameras. So when we do locate a problem site, we do put a camera out there, and we do try to catch the people that do that dumping. Sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not, but more than not, we are able to mitigate some of those areas. So if it's a chronic issue in a certain area, I'll give you my card after this. You can give me a call, and we'll work with the Keep Montgomery County Beautiful team at Solid Waste Services to put something out there.
Well, I gotta say, for the city, at one point, the city had a "don't use a straw" big effort around Dayton, and I thought it was absolutely absurd comparable to focus on, I mean, focusing on not using straws is a good thing. However, given the circumstances all around Dayton, I thought it was rather absurd to focus on that instead of this huge waste problem all over the city of Dayton. Just an opinion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, any questions?
No. I think it's great that we're, you know, we looked at other counties, what they're doing, and really make sure that we're not raising rates for, excuse me, our other citizens. And, you know, just to comment on what you said, ma'am, you know, we do see, especially northwest Dayton, west Dayton, and your friend is not alone. I mean, there's cleanup opportunities every single weekend that could happen in the, not just the county.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong person. I can't see your mouth.
No, you're fine. You're fine. One of the other things that we offer for these cleanups that can't believe you didn't talk about, but is our trailers that go out, and those are free of charge, and a lot of these organizations are using those. We have two, and, you know, just for cleanup purposes, and we provide.
Lawnmowers, rake, garbage bags.
Rakes, garbage bags.
Safety equipment.
Yes, and so a lot of the cleanups that are happening throughout the city and other parts of county use that, the wonderful trailers we have. And, you know, our team, as Bob mentioned, Keep Montgomery County Beautiful, there are also grants available.
Do you guys slap fines on absentee landlords?
Yes. Do we, now, but jurisdictions do.
Good, substantive fines.
Well, I guess the sheriff does. Yeah.
If they're probably getting.
And Bob mentioned the two deputies that work with us. What they have done is wonderful, but you're right. I mean, it's like you get one area cleaned up, and there it is again. So it's not lost on anyone, and we do have wonderful groups throughout the county that are really serious about this, east side, west side, and there's always, like I said, there's almost always a cleanup you can find on any given weekend. So it's definitely something that we're all working towards. Cleaning up, you know, I know Charlie did some research a while back trying to find an owner of a horrible dumping site over King's Highway area. It was unbelievable, and it's just like, it's almost like a, it's like a dump. And so that is well on its way to being cleaned up, but it's just getting awareness of people, and I think social media has really helped get the word out to people, and they're willing to go clean up. So, but just know that we do have some resources to help in those cleanup areas.
But I would say, coming from Athens, you get whacked hard financially if you have a dump on your property. You get whacked hard financially. That does something.
The problem is, you know, a lot of these homeowners, a lot of the owners of these properties are long gone, you know? I mean, it takes forever to figure out who they are, and then they'll be, let's say, in California, oh, I don't know anything about that.
And these trailers are very popular, and you have to reserve. You just can't, oh, I would like it tomorrow.
Yeah, we actually deliver the trailer to the site, and the priority board uses the trailer for an entire weekend, and then we will come pick it up and replenish all the supplies that are used and everything.
Good to know.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioners, I'd like to take the time to recognize the team that have been working on this fee structure for well over a year, along with the solid waste district and the jurisdictions within the district. So would you all please stand to be recognized? I want to thank you all, James, Paul, you guys, BJ, Bob.
I just think it's wonderful that we haven't had to raise these fees for, what, 24 years since? Isn't that unbelievable? Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the revised solid waste rates regarding the transfer of residential, commercial, and industrial waste and recyclables under the Montgomery County Solid Waste District effective January 1, 2022. A second.
All those in favor. Aye. Okay, we have a few individuals that have signed up to make some comments, and the first one is Kathleen Gold. Yeah. Ma'am, you have five minutes. You want to state your name and address?
Kathleen Gold, 5066 St. Louis Drive, J. Melk Drive. As I said earlier, I haven't lived here in 50 years, but I've been going back and forth to the last 12, taking care of elderly parents part-time and now full-time for the last seven years. So my mother, 93, has lived here her whole life. Anyway, I've become a member of the Clergy Community Coalition three years ago and have spent a lifetime working on human rights and social justice issues. And as you all well know, that is a huge issue here in Dayton. Premier, as most of us know, Health Network, that private hospitals that call themselves nonprofit yet pay CEOs massive amounts of, you know, their salaries. I don't begrudge anybody their salary, but their compensation packages are huge, and yet they are tax exempt, I believe, in the city, the state, and the federal government because they are supposed to provide services in an equitable fashion under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. We know, I mean, I was shocked, excuse me, that that place was being closed down in a 75% African-American neighborhood. I thought, taking my mother back and forth from Colorado to here, I thought, no way are they going to get away with this. And however, I went to the hospital about two weeks prior to their closing and spent about five hours in there talking to young women who were AIDS, who were now going to have to take two buses across town to go to a job at Miami Valley. Lots of people, as we collected the 400 testimonials for the federal investigation, we're talking to people who didn't have cars, who had been Honda good Sam forever. So we are asking, now that Premier has thrown out a bare bone of 12,000 square feet on that site, we are asking the city, the county, and Premier to add some meat to that bone. We would like to see, the Clergy Coalition would like to see pregnancy education services, birthing services, a NIC unit, an emergency unit, life stages, healthcare coverage, and I said emergency, Nancy, she'll cover the rest. But I want to just read Title VI under the VI Civil Rights Act that our federal complaint is based on. It says, "No person in the U.S. shall, on the ground of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in or be denied the benefits or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance," which Premier does. So if they want to give up their tax exemption, do it, because they are not providing healthcare in an equitable fashion on the northwest side of Dayton. It also says that, under Title VI Civil Rights Act, that the government oversight responsibilities, the government is required to enforce Title VI, and we have a private right of return of action in federal court to sue healthcare facilities that engage in intentional discrimination that prevent accessibility or opportunities in healthcare under federally funded programs. So again, we are asking the city, the county, and Premier to put some meat on that 12,000 square foot facility that they've offered. We want equivalent to what Beaver Creek is going to get, which is 35,000 feet. We want also maybe above what those other areas are going to get because of the needs in that neighborhood. Most of you are aware of infant mortality rate in the black community as well as mothers' mortality rate. So we're asking all of you guys to help us out in any way you can, given your decisions. Thank you. Thank you.
Bishop Richard Cox?
He's not here.
Nancy?
Hi.
Hello. Good to see you all.
Good to see you too.
Do you need my address already, ma'am?
We have it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So we have a great deal to be cautiously optimistic about. On July 21, 2021, Premier Health Partners announced that they would be building a healthcare facility on the former Good Samaritan Hospital site. This facility would include doctor's offices, imaging, lab, physical therapy, and urgent care. We in the Clergy Community Coalition believe that this is a good first step, but an urgent care does not. July 21st, 2021, Premier Health Partners announced that they would be building a healthcare facility on the former Good Samaritan Hospital site. This facility would include doctor's offices, imaging, lab, physical therapy, and urgent care. We in the Clergy Community Coalition believe that this is a good first step, but an urgent care does not replace a multimillion dollar hospital. In 2017, Good Samaritan Hospital tax assessment was put at a value for the hospital of $98 million for a 2 million square foot facility. It is a long road from the $30 million now proposed for a 12,000 foot facility. Eight months ago, at a joint press conference with Mayor Whaley and President Mary Busalis, CEO of Premier Health Partners, they announced a joint investment of $30 million for the GSH site. This public-private project was not embraced by the CCC because healthcare, which is so desperately needed on the west side of Salem Corridor, was not part of the proposal or allowed to be proposed. Eight months is a long time for $30 million to sit in a high-yield savings account. That accrued interest, I estimated, $2.7 million. Presently, Montgomery County has been allotted $103 million as of March 2021. There is no word that distribution has begun as you await federal guidelines which include money to be used for COVID-related expenses like vaccines, public health, small business relief, and support for low-income people and schools. But while you wait, that money is also accruing interest. It has been six months with potentially $3 million being added to that account. Right now, this doesn't like me. Right now, county, city, and Premier Network are awash in money. I know great hardship and debt accrued that needs to be shored up because of the pandemic. But what we are asking for has to do with public health, the loss of a hospital. Miami Valley Hospital announced on Friday to the public, quote, "Do not go to the emergency room because we cannot take you," unquote. Miami Valley, Grandview, Premier North, all of the hospitals in the area were supposed to absorb the annual emergency room patient load from Good Samaritan Hospital, which they cannot, from what Good Samaritan Hospital wants to absorb. Because this pandemic now far exceeds our imagination. Had Good Samaritan Hospital still stood, the burden would be lighter. That is why we are asking for an additional $20 million from the city, $20 million from the county, $20 million from Premier, $20 million from the state, and an additional $20 million from the federal government, which puts us at $130 million, which is pretty close to the replacement cost in today's market of Good Samaritan Hospital. What we are also asking for is hope, an amazing sign of hope that out of the ashes of Good Samaritan Hospital will rise a medical facility that will also have in addition to what is being offered, mental health programs and treatment, emergency room, surgery services, intensive care unit, outpatient obstetrics, clinic-like LifeStages, birthing center, and emergency neonatal prevention wellness program, to name a few, and the additional hospital beds needed to support these services. And last, one more ask. It has been two years, August of 2019, when this elected body approved Montgomery County Resolution 19-0976 to authorize $590 million in hospital revenue bonds for Premier Health Partners. We are asking that if any new hospital bond resolution from Premier comes before you, that you would vote no until Premier agrees to replace Good Samaritan Hospital with a comparable medical facility that will be able to respond to the needs of the west side and northwest Dayton. Help us get the right healthcare facility for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, comments by county administrators?
Thank you, commissioners. Well, we've got some fantastic employees at Montgomery County and we are grateful whenever we get a chance to recognize them. And one of our behind-the-scenes employees, and I say behind-the-scenes because he's really in the front, but he always throws, I can mess with him. He's from our communications department, Robert Green, was recognized by the Public Relations Society of America, the Dayton Area Chapter, as the Young Professional of the Year. So, Robert, you want to stand? Now, Robert is our marketing coordinator. And he isn't tracking our social media platforms and tracking our metrics and analytics. And now you can see why I said behind the scenes. But he's creating design work and taking photos at our live events, which is when you actually see Robert, because he very rarely will say anything. He's always willing to pitch in and volunteer. And he always has time for work he causes, such as United Way, UNCF, Culture Works. He's also on the Dayton History Board in his free time. And he is also earning his MBA certificate in graduate digital marketing. I have worked with Robert very closely for the last few years. And while I like to mess with him because he doesn't say anything, we are so blessed to have Robert on our team. He's immensely talented. And Robert, congratulations on behalf of myself and the commissioners and the entire administration. That's all I have.
Okay. Watch our building beginning tomorrow. We're going to have purple lights on. And that's going to be in recognition of International Overdose Awareness Day, which is August 31st. Our county will also be observing a moment of silence at noon on Overdose Awareness Day next Tuesday. And we'll have our flags flying at half-mast at all of our facilities as we remember those that we have lost. Obviously, our community has been hit hard by the opiate epidemic. The height of it was 2017, when we saw 566 overdose deaths in Montgomery County. Those numbers might have been even worse, but one for the coordinated efforts of our Community Overdose Action Team or COAT, which is a collaboration between Public Health Dayton and Montgomery County, and our Adamus Board and Montgomery County. Right, and we did make tremendous progress with the work of the COAT's 10 branches. But I am sad to say, and I think most of you know, we have seen an uptick in substance abuse since the pandemic started. There were 323 overdose deaths in our county in 2020, representing a 12% increase over 2019. And with 224 deaths suspected overdose deaths through the middle of this month, this trend is sadly and very unfortunately not slowing down. And it's important to note that the uptick in overdose deaths isn't just for Montgomery County, it's a state and national trend. So this is a very sad trend that we see across our country. And in fact, nationwide, we are looking at a 29% increase in overdose deaths from 2019 to 2020. Just heartbreaking. Because not only is every one of those so sad and tragic, but the ripple effect on the children, the family members, the friends, the community. You just can't even put a price on all that sorrow and tragic even what it has. Opioids and other substances have taken far too many of our sons, daughters, parents, friends, and neighbors. And we urge you, if you know anyone who is struggling with drugs, please have them seek assistance through www.gethelpnowmc, which is for Montgomery County, dot com. So once again, if you know anybody, it's just an app away to get some help. Because one person listening could be the one shot that person has to change the trajectory of where they're heading. That's www.gethelpnowmc.com. Now, a little bit broader than that, I just want to add also that this past weekend, Leadership Ohio was in Dayton. And I'm part of that group. There's about 40 leaders from across the county, or I mean, across the state, sorry, sorry. And from all different blocks, there's very few elected officials. They're just, you know, nonprofits, industry, all kinds of different organizations. And they came to our community. And many had driven by but had never stopped in Dayton. So they had a perception of what we were like. And so they were with us for two solid days. And we took advantage of it and put our, you know, I think we really showed them what we're all about. Yes, we have lots of issues, unless we guess we have lots of problems. But if you've heard me once, and all of us, you've heard me twice, and we tend to, all of these tragedies that have happened in the last few years, you know, we come together and we try to find solutions. So we showed them the arcade, which was kind of a modern-day version of the Engineers Club. Because I honestly have, you know, born and raised here. And we were at the Engineers Club, and I learned a few things about the Engineers Club that I didn't know, even though I've been in it 50 times. We also introduced them to the arts. And they were blown away by the size of our community and just the magnitude of the variety and the quality of the arts that we have. And we showed them preschool promise and all that we're doing in that innovative space. And we even took them to a preconcert at the Levitt Pavilion on Friday night. So I am pleased to report that at the end, they said they were actually going to make a point of coming back because they were delightfully surprised at what a wonderful community that we have. So I was pretty proud that we had them here and to show them, despite our issues and cities across Ohio all have issues, we have a lot of bright, shining assets in our community. And I can also tell you that one of the things they were impressed as they walked around and people they've been met, the friendliness of the people who just walking down the street, glad to help you out, answer a question. So I just wanted to let you know, we had a great weekend and it was just wonderful. And I can't wait to go see the other cities. Our next stop is Cleveland.
Commissioners, if I could just weigh in on what Commissioner Rice said real quick. Your support of the nationwide and state opiate settlement, it will not replace the challenges that we have in this area, but it will be very helpful in prevention in the future. So I want to thank you for that. As those funds get distributed into the community, we'll be able to do a lot of good in the form of prevention. So.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to as well. You know, like you said, Michael, it's not going to fill what's happened over the last 12 years. But, you know, and I'm glad, Carolyn, I mean, we have to continue to bring awareness around this because, you know, an epidemic within a pandemic, it really got lost, I think, on so many. Because we had it, you know, in front of mind, fighting, not that anybody stopped doing what they were doing, but, you know, it's one of those things we have to continue to have the awareness around it. And I think between the dollars that we will get as a county and then the dollars the state will get, and then the foundation is going to get actually, the state foundation will get the bulk of the money. And that's going to be our awareness and other things that we continue to educate. And it's just really incredible. And of course, we knew last year that our numbers were going to go up, but it's so sad to see now what's happened. So keep going on the fight, thank you. So one of our many local organizations that we're fortunate to have in Montgomery County that addresses hunger in our community is The Good Neighbor House. And the three of us had the opportunity to go last week to their groundbreaking for their addition that they're doing. And it's a long-needed addition, believe me. It's really amazing the work that they do at such a small facility, right over by the Dragon Park. And so you probably never passed it and didn't even know what it was. So we're really excited for them to be able to continue to assist the community, thanks like the Kettering Network for their role in this. You know, Frank Fred retired from Kettering and now it's almost like he's the godfather of The Good Neighbor House, but he is, you can tell he's engaged in it every single day. And I was glad, it's been around The Neighbor House, they've been doing great work. I was shocked how many years they've been doing this work.
About 20.
Yeah. And so many Montgomery County families and individuals have come to rely on this organization to really meet their basic needs. A lot of times we think, oh, dental, dental, but they do so much more than that. They have a pantry that they run, they have offer clothing and household goods. And they have a host of their medical services. We have to meet the medical director there. And the services they provide are at very affordable prices to fill gaps. But even though people may have Medicaid, they may still have gaps, and especially dental in that needs. And we know how important dental is to the whole well-being of people's health. They also provide primary care, eye exams, and of course, the dental services. And they are doing educational outreach on healthy eating, smoking cessation, diabetes control, and more. So, you know, we love going to those kind of groundbreaking, well, not follow groundbreaking, honestly, but it was really hot, so we didn't care for that. But it's just, it's great to see them growing. And we're happy that we are able to just continue to support them. We've been a longtime supporter of The Neighbor House and it's just one of those things that we're happy that we can continue to do.
And I know we pointed out Robert's role today and how he's a bright, shiny star on our team. But at that event, they also, Liz Mahar, if I can give her a shout out, she's not here. Can you make sure she knows? They really complimented Liz, who's in the Human Services Planning Development Committee. Like, given any application or grant challenge, Liz is always there to make sure that they meet all the applications. So they made a community-wide, so I think we should also recognize her role. And she's just typical of a lot of our members of Montgomery County, how we try to put an extra mile to house her.
Quiet assistants, nobody makes a big deal of it, but they did. Talk about it from the guys and the directors.
And she was there, so that is even better part that she gets recognized, not as long as they're there.
The other thing that was kind of interesting that I did last week was in my role as County Commissioner Association, I welcomed the 60-plus new county commissioners throughout the state. And some of them were just overwhelmed with the amount of stuff that we have to worry about and work on. But it was nice to get to know them, you guys have been doing it at the Warner Conference. Some of our, many of them are our neighbors. There are three new county commissioners in Prell County. And Michael came up in the book as well. I did two sessions and Michael did a session. Two new in Miami County, or well.
Green County has one.
Yeah, one, yeah.
Dark County.
Dark County has one. So it's just nice to get to know our partners, our neighbors, sometimes our partners. But yeah, that was really interesting.
That's all I have. Okay, our next meeting is Tuesday, August 31st. And I just saw Brooks Compton, the mayor of Senator, walk in to say hi. Hi. So we'll see you next Tuesday, 1:30 right here.
I'm going to adjourn.
Okay.